Okay, we will move on to Resolution Number 11. I wrote, clerk brought it to my attention that obviously these all apply together. One would not be of any use without the other one, so to speak, so I wonder if we want to group 11, 12, and 13 all together and then we can discuss them all at once.
So moved.
Thank you. Then if you would like to read them, please.
Number 11 is approving the agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated for the performance contract for water meter system replacement, which is expected to be absorbed by the net operational savings of the water meter replacement project. Number 12 is authorizing installment purchase contract to finance the water meter system replacement, which is also expected to be absorbed by the net operational savings of the water meter replacement project. And number 13 is authorizing the purchase of the utility billing.net software from BSNA Software for $49,725, which is also expected to be absorbed by the net operational savings of the water meter replacement project, and it would authorize the annual software maintenance fee while the city is using this software.
Do we have a motion to approve those three resolutions?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz. Ruiz, is there a discussion, or perhaps we could have Mr. Clegg explain this whole process to us first?
Mayor Rep. and councilmembers, in October of 2010, the City Council authorized a project development agreement with JCI to Johnson Controls to look at the feasibility of improving the city's water meter infrastructure and methods for collecting data from that infrastructure, and look at our billing system, and what can we do to make improvements and bring us up-to-date with current standards. If council wishes, I've asked Dan Mack from Johnson Controls to be here tonight, and he has a brief, probably a five-slide presentation, if council wishes to see it, that will briefly describe the nature of the project at kind of the back end of that project development agreement that brings us here today.
Would everybody like to see it? I think it's certainly a good idea.
Would you do it, please?
Mayor Rep., City Manager Brown, councilmembers.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
I just want to tell you, you got my vote, and you might lose it by showing this, so watch what you say.
I'll make it short.
You're done?
I go, yeah. My job, ladies. You can go home and see the family. All right, just real quickly, we're going to go over the program goals that guided the analysis, just a brief synopsis of the analysis, and then we'll talk about the scope and benefits. The program goals that guided our analysis were, number one was upgrading your aging infrastructure. Like many cities, counties, in the state of Michigan, and really all over the country, the infrastructure in the ground is aging, it's difficult to get the money to replace that infrastructure, and consequently, it's more inefficient than what it really needs to be. To reduce the cost, like you're trying to do in every other department in the city, increase overall system accuracy and efficiency, enhance customer service. The reading system you've got now is two or three different types of reading systems that don't necessarily work together. This would give you one cohesive system that works throughout the city. And then provide a platform for monthly billing. Most of our bills come on a monthly basis, and we don't like paying taxes, we don't like paying insurance, because it doesn't necessarily come on a monthly basis. It's something that we have to budget for, which is more difficult for the residents. And then finally, that it's self-funded. As I mentioned, you don't have the extra funds to make these improvements, and that's why they're aging, and that's why they're so inefficient. As Bob mentioned, in October, you approved the project development agreement. We gathered a lot of information from the staff. We modeled the entire meter database to get a better sense of how the system is running, what kind of inaccuracies we could find. We performed a propagation study, which is basically a radio study, because this is an automated meter-reading system. We needed to ensure that things like the bridge weren't going to interfere. So we're confident that you've got the coverage that you need, and we're going to overbuild the coverage, so you have redundancy. And we co-developed the scope, and I'll talk about it in the next step slide with the staff, and then develop the implementation plan and schedule. We're going to be replacing a little over half of the meters. We used our engineering study to determine what that breakpoint was, determined by accuracy, cost of replacement, ROI, things like that. We'll be retrofitting about 5,000 meters to ensure that they can receive the new reading system. So we'll touch every meter. We're going to install over 12,500 transmitters throughout the city. We're going to install a network that will receive those communications, bring them back to City Hall here. And then some of the things that we found as we did our study, a lot of seized valves, things like that, that we're going to replace, and then we're going to repair a bunch of large meters to make sure that the entire system is accurate and efficient. And then there is obviously a salvage value to the old meters. Once we get through the projects, we'll keep the meters for a period of time in case there's billing disputes, things like that, and once that period is over, we will then salvage the meters, and then whatever the proceeds are at that point in time, because brass prices go up and down, that'll go back to the city. And then we'll provide meter stock for the city as well. The benefits from the reading system, right now, you basically will get four reads a year on a meter. It's hard to glean any information from that. It's hard for customer service reps to really help customers with issues when you've only got four reads in an entire 12-month period. So this will give you hourly reads, every meter, every day. So it'll give you that granularity to determine potentially if there's a toilet leak at a residence. There's a lot of things that you can watch that your folks here in the city don't have time to watch, and they're not going to have to watch, because the system will actually watch for you and give flags. And then, so you'll get more timely, more accurate response to customer inquiries, things like leaks, both on the customer side and the city side, so you can reduce some of those instances where someone left town, left the water running, pipe breaks, you may not know it for three months, other than the neighbor saying that water coming out the front door. Flexible billing options, as I mentioned, monthly billing, the ability to log usage for troubleshooting. You can log down to several minutes a day. I think a lot of billing owners, especially commercial owners, like to see that, because they like to maybe get their own operations more efficient. It's hard for them to do that if they don't know what their usage patterns are. And it's a two-way system, so you can quote-unquote dial up the meter and change parameters that way. And then, you know, it supports conservation. I think we all agree that that's a good thing. The overall benefits of the program, it is self-funded, it's backed by Johnson Controls. We've been around for 125 years, we're not going anywhere. It's a turnkey approach, Bob and his staff, they don't have the bandwidth because of staff reductions over the years, and let's face it, this isn't something you're going to do every day. This is something that the city will do, you know, in your lifetime. You won't do this again for another 20 years. Upgrade the technology, as Bob said, enhance customer service, that's a big piece of this. And then the overall increase efficiency of the system.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Just one quick question, if I could, Mayor. Any privacy issues here for homeowner?
We've done a lot of these projects, and that comes up every time. We work with the city staff to ensure that we've got the proper badging. There's a, when we make the appointments, there's always a number on a door hanger or a letter that they can call the city. One of the things that we'll have to do before we start is make sure that it's out on the website, make sure that there's customer education, so they know the process, they know who to call, and we really haven't had issues. We've installed almost a million meters in the performance contracting realm.
And these are read by radio frequency or somehow? How they do that? Is it just a central feed to location, or are there multiple locations in the city that?
There's, every meter's going to have a transmitter, little gray box. That's going to transmit on an hourly basis to a data collector. There's a data collector at each one of the water towers. And Jim, wherever he at, he's going to provide communication to the city's network, and it's going to be your network. This isn't going to be Johnson Controls, so there's no proprietary issues here. But it'll get on the city's network, it'll go back to a server here in this building, and then from that server, it'll go to billing system, it'll go to the water department, whoever else needs the data.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
I have one for John. On the financing, how long is it going to take us to pay back the actual money part of the financing?
Mayor and council, it's a 15-year term, so it'll take 15 years to recover. It's designed so that essentially it nets to zero each year based on the estimates, and then there is some positive cash flow in the 15th year, and that's at the point that the debt will be repaid.
I understand that, but how long is it? We're financing it through who? The $5 million that we're going to pay for the actual water meters? How long is that? Pay back on that? How, we have to pay back to whoever borrowing it from?
We're borrowing it over a 15-year term. So it's, the savings generated each year makes the payments each year, but it's over that 15-year term.
Any other questions? Thank you. We'll take the vote, then.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep? Yes. We'll move on to ordinance, this is number one.
It's being given its first reading and is in an ordinance to amend Chapter 12, Businesses, Article 10, Peddlers and Solicitors, Transient Merchants or Vendors of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Port Huron for the purpose of clarifying business activities.
Do we have a motion to give ordinance number one its first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Fisher?
I have a discussion and a few questions, and I think it was interesting, because two things were brought up that exactly about what I was going to ask. Real simple, as I read through this, I was hoping to see more of an opening of the peddler ordinance, but it looks like it's more of a closing to me. For instance, if I, let's say I decide to change my career, and I want to sell ice cream bars from one of those pedal bike ice cream trucks. And so I go through and I get my peddler permit, and I agree to sell in certain areas, but I'm in Pine Grove Park in there and doing things, and then decide, well, I'm going to ride my bike along and go to the Flag Plaza. As I'm going through the Edison Shores Parkway, someone's waving at me and wants to buy an ice cream bar. The way I read this, I can't stop.
That's correct. Under the proposed revised ordinance that's being read tonight, there is no soliciting or peddling in that area that's defined as the Thomas Edison Parkway area. Basically, it would be allowed north of the bridge, but that is correct.
All right. That's good enough for me.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Proton.
Is there a limitation on how many of these licenses we're willing to give out?
No, I don't believe there has been in the past, although I think Sue could correct me in that, you talking about the peddling and soliciting license?
Well, what, another thing that's happening with this is that if someone does want to set up a business on city property in one of our parks, that it would become a vendor instead of a peddler. And then you would have to pay consideration back to the city, like the Lions Club, in their case, they pay, I believe it's 5.5% on their first $5,000, so that's like $325. So it makes everybody on an equal playing field, but then they're permitted to be in a location that we pick within the park, and that's where they will sell from. Instead of it being a roaming, where they can just roam anywhere, anytime, you know, it's difficult to monitor when they can move so much, and we get complaints about different things, and sometimes people aren't licensed. This way, we would know, in this park, this is who is set up, they'll give set times in order to vend, and people would know then that they are going to be in that park, and that, hey, I can get an ice cream bar if that's what the choice is, or I can get a hot dog, or whatever.
For the gentleman from the Lions Club, this doesn't negatively affect them from what they're accustomed to, is it?
Correct. That would not affect them.
That's correct.
And we would offer it first to nonprofits that want it to operate. We believe that we should offer it to nonprofits first, if someone wants to come in and be a vendor in a park.
Okay. Thanks, Sue. I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
Any other discussion down at this end of the table, as I'm looking back and forth?
I don't even know how to ask the question or where to begin. What we have going on now, Johnny's selling hot dogs down, kind of in the parking lot, but kind of on the grass, south of the bridge. So this would preclude him from doing that, he would have to move north. And we also would say that he couldn't become a vendor and have a permanent location there as well.
The vendor part of the ordinance is separate than the peddling and soliciting part, requires another agreement with the city. It's referred to as a park permit agreement in here. You don't need that specific agreement to peddle or solicit. You either need to be licensed as a peddler or solicitor through the city, you need to be exempt from the ordinance, or you need to have a veteran's license provided for through the state by the county. The, I would say that the substantive changes that were made, aside from this area restriction, was to make sure that this ordinance applies to everybody who's peddling or soliciting, whether they're a veteran or not. That was what I would deem to be the problem with the prior version, and it's corrected in this version, so that somebody who's not a veteran is subject to the same rules and restrictions as to somebody, you know, who is a veteran. So whether you're licensed through the city, whether you're a veteran or exempt, all these rules are going to apply to you. And there were other, I think Sue did a good job on the, kind of the cover sheet to this to highlight the other changes, but that's the big one.
And if I'm understanding it correctly, the same holds true then for the ice cream truck. He can drive his truck up and down Grashen, stop, but he cannot on Edison Parkway.
Correct. There's no peddling or soliciting in that Parkway area as it's defined in here, which is generally south of the bridge. But it doesn't change the other things that have been going on for years. I mean, I bought ice cream from an ice cream truck on Saturday. It doesn't change that stuff in the neighborhoods.
Let's just wait a second.
Does this prohibit them from Pine Grove Park, then? Or just the Edison?
I believe Pine Grove Park. Let me check the definition real quick, just so I'm sure I'm.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Right now, peddling, if you are peddling a product that is similar to what the Lions Club is selling right now, the current ordinance prohibits peddlers from being in Pine Grove Park.
Okay. Yeah, that's been like that for a while.
Yes, it has.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Well, I don't know. I guess you travel to other towns and other communities, and, you know, I've traveled a bit, and some communities are really fun to go to and visit, and some are not. And to me, I can envision that area down there, I can see somebody doing face painting, I can see somebody selling kites, that people can actually fly right there in the large open area, maybe somebody selling a bottle of water, even on a pedal cart and all, and this ordinance doesn't allow for anything like that, and that just discourages me. Even someone going through and being a living statue, they can paint themselves bronze and being a living statue and busking. None of this stuff that makes a community fun, that brings art, is going to be allowed under this, and it just disturbs me that we're becoming more like a Stepford community again, than a community that's going to be open and fun. So I cannot support this in its, the way it's written right now. I applaud the effort for making things consistent between the veteran permit and the standard permit. I think that is much needed, and something that obviously was lacking, but the fact how much we're tightening this up just makes our community a community of exclusion rather than inclusion, to me.
Any other? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I agree with Councilmember Fisher. I like what you guys have done on some parts, but the other parts, I don't. I have always envisioned the water having a ton of vendors down there, selling multiple different products, and I won't support it either. You go to Chicago, you go to St. Joe's and them areas, and you see lots of people on the beach selling different products, and I think it brings people to this area, knowing that, hey, you know, who knows who's going to be down there today at Thomas Edison Park? I can go down there and see what they're offering this weekend. I mean, I don't want to see it to be a flea market or anything, but I understand where Councilmember Fisher's coming from.
Mayor, if I?
I think Councilmember Archibald had a question first.
Does this address? You want me to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
Okay. My concern wasn't so much that they were there, it was the appearance.
It does.
They look carnivorous. And I talked to one of the gentlemen that had a problem with this, and I said, I didn't have a problem in being down there. Occasionally, my wife and I bike through there quite frequently. My problem was, I didn't want to look like a carnival down there. I want to look classy, dignified, and that's what I'd be more concerned about controlling, is whether, not whether they're there, is how they appear when they are there, and we don't look like a junkyard.
And what you're talking about is the stationary-type peddling or soliciting operations, and that was cleaned up in here to provide that it's got to be one cart. It can't be one cart and a number of accessories surrounding the cart. That was a little vague in the prior draft, and that's cleared up in here as well.
I'm sorry, Sharon.
That's okay. I have to concur. I guess I had understood that we were going to put restrictions on what it could look like, what would be down there, but not that we were going to prohibit anyone from selling down there. In fact, if I had it my way, I'd love to see umbrella carts down there that all look the same, and you could get a hot dog at one, and ice cream at another, and water at another, and, but they would all be uniform, or they would all be within a certain scope. And we would be inviting, I love the kite idea, by the way. I think that's what we should be doing, as opposed to just asking people to come down and look at the water. I think it's a good idea that we have something down there. So I'm a little uncomfortable that we're saying you can't be there at all, including an ice cream truck. I mean, what is the problem with an ice cream truck driving down and stopping, selling ice cream, and then moving on?
Well, I think from my perspective, the problem is consistency, and we needed it to apply consistently to everybody.
And I agree with that.
Can I ask a question? Certainly, Mayor. I think there seems to be a difference between what's a peddler and a vendor, and I think maybe that's where we're going here. Now, if you're a vendor, you can vend in the park, correct?
Well, you have to get a specific.
Once you get a license.
License agreement from the city, correct.
So it's not prohibiting everything from being down there? It's just controlling it? Do I understand that correctly?
Well, yeah, vendors, I would, to me, would be more like the, what we have at Lakeside or what we have at Pine Grove Park currently, not something that goes away every night. But the new need, you can't be there unless they enter into a park permit agreement with the city. So there is room to establish a vendor in these areas, if approved. Not peddling or soliciting, which is the moving.
Right.
Or the movable stand situation.
But if somebody had, came in and applied, they could actually locate in the Thomas Edison Park if they were approved, and if they had a stand that was safe for kites, I'll use that for an example, if they had the agreement and they paid similar to how they pay back for the spot with the Lions Club, and perhaps that type of an arrangement.
You're 100% right, Mayor. The restrictions on location apply to peddling and soliciting only.
Moveable, things that come in and go out, and move here and move there.
Yes, correct. Not longer-term type situations.
Okay.
I have a question then.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lewandowski.
The kite stand came in, and they couldn't take it down at night, though it had to be there, it'd be something left up or brought back every day. It couldn't just come in for one or two days a week if it wanted to, under the vendor's permit, right?
Yeah, it'd have to be, again, with the permit with the city, correct. It's not so much what's being sold, it's kind of how the operation is being conducted.
So actually, someone could sell hot dogs down there? As long as they had a vending permit, and they complied with the rules of the ordinance, and paid their fee, and they were approved, and all of that, they could do it?
Correct. If they had the park permit agreement as it's outlined under the vendor section, certainly.
Okay.
And that's what goes on in a number of the parks, and there was no intent to stop that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
But the hot dog cart can't move?
Correct.
It's got to be nailed down?
Not nailed down. It just has to stay.
Well, I'm sorry, it's a, it has to be permanently attached. It could be on concrete, it could be on wire, it could be, you're shaking your head no, Sue, or?
We would assign them a specific location, so that then.
Can't move every day.
They would have to pay the consideration, similar to what the Port Huron Lions Club would do, because it is on city property, having a business, but we would give them a location that they could be guaranteed that if they wanted to do it, if they agreed, and the special events committee worked it out and negotiated it, they only want it to be there on the weekends, because the kite business, that's probably when the business picks up. Only want it to be there in this certain location, Saturdays and Sundays, they kind of guarantee that they're going to be there, set up, so people would know they're going to be there.
But nobody can push a flower cart there? The, I'm thinking of Eliza Doolittle pushing a cart of flowers and selling a cart of flowers. I've got a vision, I've got a tourist destination in mind, I've got a picture of what this looks like, and what we're proposing is not that. But again, that's my vision, it may not be everybody's. So Eliza Doolittle cannot be there selling her flowers.
She could in a permanent loca, I mean, we would set her in a location, she could come in and out.
But she can't, but to walk the Parkway?
Correct.
What about if there was a business for a brief time, and actually maybe again, where somebody's doing bicycle tours that are paid sometimes, and so a bicycle tour comes by and people are tipping or whatever, so this is a business passing through with, you have one bicycle, a number of people on bicycles following, that is doing a bicycle tour, and you stop. There's money paid on that, where is that business?
Well, they're passing through, is that what you're saying?
Right.
But they started somewhere else?
Right.
In my mind, that business would be the location that you start the tour, you set it up.
But my ice cream truck is not.
Correct. That's, it's where the sales occur, and the soliciting actually occurs, is what you're looking at, is the restricted area.
Any other discussion?
I just have one question. It has to be north of the bridge, though, right?
Under the proposed revision, correct. Not in the International Plaza area. That's also restricted out.
But just for peddlers?
Peddlers and solicitors, correct.
But not vendors?
Correct.
Vendors can be south of the bridge.
Yes.
So if I want to have a location south of the bridge, in the corner of the first parking lot, I can apply to do that, and be allowed to park and sell there. I don't have to attach it, I can just leave it sit there.
The city, under the proposal now, and actually, we didn't change this part, but with respect to vendors, there's a little more control, because you can enter into these agreements with them, provide a little more control over, obviously, where it's going to be, what it's going to look like, and that sort of thing. And you're providing them an exclusive right to that specific location for whatever the set period of time is, so.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you for your explanations. Okay, we will take the vote to give this its first reading.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember Miller?
Oh, boy. I think I'd like to look at this a little bit more, so I'm going to say no for this time, Bjorn.
Councilmember Moller?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
No.
Councilmember Archibald?
I agree, I think I need to look at it longer. No.
Councilmember Fisher?
No.
Mayor Rep?
I guess it doesn't matter what I say, really. I am going to say no, though. I do believe, though, with saying that, that we do need to make some changes. I just think it needs to be a little bit better explained. I think, I think there's, it's very confusing for us, let alone the public, as to what the difference is, to what can and can't be in what area, for what reasons, but this does not mean that I think that we still need to have something come back to us that certainly clarifies, if but nothing else, what actually can be there in a site, because that was one of the issues, and I think even Mayor Proton Miller, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I think you said it, is the operation itself, the different ones that were there, you want to have them be neat and clean and tidy, and an asset to our community. So I do think we should have, if the administration would bring us back something that at least addresses that part of it, and maybe if it's better clarified as to what the difference is, the vendors, the peddlers, that type of thing, but I'm certainly open to looking at it again in a different format.
Yeah, if I, if I just may, I think you hit it pretty well on the head. To me, it's the appearance, how they appeared on there. I don't want to look trashy. I want it to look professional, classy, appealing to the eye, so I'm more concerned about that than I am location.
I agree. And I think also appealing to the people who have to live there, and have to look at it day after day after day, that it's not, you know, the flashing lights that we and have to look at it day after day after day, that it's not, you know, the flashing lights that we had last time. Those kinds of things, I understand why people didn't want to have to see that all night long. But I don't know that I felt that we wanted to restrict people from selling. I think we wanted to make it where it was attractive, and it did look like it does in the big cities, and we have that. The snack dog vendors that you have in Chicago and Toronto and everywhere else.
Yeah, and I think that's, I don't want to speak for Mr. Fisher, but I think that's kind of what he wants, but I think it needs to be classy-looking, so. Am I right?
Absolutely.
Is there anything else to come before the council?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Moller?
I would just like to compliment the council members and the other people that ran for council last time because they can read and write, unlike people running for the school board who can't read that it's illegal to place their signs on the boulevards and city property. It scares me that they're running for school board and can't read the law and follow the law. So just want to compliment us, even though some of us did accidentally have our signs put on the boulevard, but at least we try to maintain the law, unlike the people running for school board.
Is there anything else to come before the council? Councilmember Fisher?
I do, real quick. This is our last meeting before May 7th, Saturday, which is actually the first game for our own vintage baseball team, the Welkin Baseball Club. The gentleman from Northville, Michigan will be traveling up here and to challenge us for a game of baseball played with the rules of the 1860s. Games are free to the public, and we do have a new location this year. St. Mary's Church, right in town, has graciously allowed us to use the field that is beside St. Mary's Church and School. Basically, that's at 12th and Ballantine or off of Sanborn area. And I encourage all of you to come. The games are free, they are absolutely perfect family entertainment with a more open field. It should be a lot more gameplay and a lot different kind of ball play. But again, this is a bit of, I would call it tongue-in-cheek historical reenactment. And just come and have a good time and cheer on your own ball club recreated from 1867.
Well, it's right in my backyard, maybe I could put a vending stand out there.
Sell hot dogs.
Sell hot dogs, there you go.
Watch a little class of some of it, though.
Is there anything else to come before the council? I had to entertain a motion to adjourn then. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.